Tuesday, August 27, 2024. The time is 7:32. We are here for the Marlboro Public Schools Committee meeting. We are taped live and streamed through WMCT-TV. So we will call this meeting to order again at 7:32. We can start with a pledge of allegiance. So if everyone can rise. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the like of the United States of America. To the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. So we're moving down the agenda. We'll move on to the superintendent's report. Item number six. Ms. Murphy.
Thank you, Mayor Christian.
You're welcome.
On August 21, 2024, I was able to meet with members from the citywide parent teacher organizations, which is also known as the PTOs. School committee member, Mr. Dan Caruso, also attended that meeting. Topics of this meeting included providing consistent communication access and training to all PTOs, the elementary cultural arts events, and continued conversations regarding grade five end-of-the-year activities. We also discussed some concerns, including consistent volunteer options for parents in our buildings, busing, which is always a hot topic, before and after-school care options. I did hear, we did hear a concern that there were limited options this year, and it was surprising, especially to some new parents, and that seems to be a little unusual concern that we had not heard before, and what extended-day enrichment options would be available in the future. The next superintendent meeting with the citywide PTOs is scheduled to take place on November 4. Included in the packet is a document about the Marlboro Public Schools' communication tools. Last year, we introduced talking points as a district-wide parent-teacher two-way communication tool. This was our first step in creating consistent district-wide expectations regarding the variety of tools and platforms we use to communicate to all stakeholders throughout the year. Chris Henry created the attached graphic titled Marlboro Public Schools' Communication Tools Guide 2024-25. The guide sets expectations for teachers and staff, principals, and district administration, and it includes the PTOs, the website, and social media. I shared this graphic with the citywide PTOs on August 21 because they are included in this graphic, since we are going to be giving them training on how they can use the website and communicate and increase their communication with all parents. I also included in my packet attached the Marlboro School, Public Schools District-wide Expectations document, also titled "We Are Committed to Creating and Accepting an Inclusive Community for All." Throughout the summer, member of the Joint Workplace Violence and Injury Prevention Committee, Heather Cullen-Toney, Verell Edwison, Leanne Voss, Michelle Smith-Packett, Mary Murphy, Patty Brown, Angela House, and Clype Pantazopoulos have met to begin a process to assess ways in which we can increase staff safety. Our first step was to complete a self-assessment, and we have identified five buckets as we begin this work. Our five buckets are our setting district-wide expectations, our use of data to identify areas that we can improve, either the materials or the supports we have in place, other trainings, our curriculum possibly, school and district community and how we work all together, our communication and how we communicate with one another. One of the first things we identified is that we are setting the message. No one comes to work in Marlboro Public Schools to be hurt, and we expect that it is a safe community for all. And then members will at some point be looking at potentially meeting or joining the policy subcommittee to see if there is anything that they've identified and asked for additional policies. Attached to my report, you will find the new Marlboro Public Schools' District-wide Expectations. Teams from all schools pre-K to 12 reviewed these expectations during the district-wide leadership retreat last week, and teams began the process of revising and or creating school-wide lessons that will reinforce these expectations. When the committee worked on the district-wide expectation, they include what the students will do, what the staff will do, what parents and caregivers will do. It is the job of administration to support all stakeholders, so everyone on this. I asked Director of HR Patty Brown to come and join us because our staffing update seems to change on a day-to-day basis. She's prepared to update the committee on staffing levels as of today.
Okay. Hello, everyone. As of today, we have 31 open regular positions. This time, exactly this time last year, we reported out that we had 55 open regular staffing positions, so we've had quite an improvement, which is good. We have five teacher positions that are still open, two behavior techs, 17 paraeducators, three cafeteria workers, two custodians, one administrative assistant office support position, and one translator position. Of the five teachers, we have two EL teachers at Goodnow, one special education teacher at Jauric, one special education teacher at Whitcomb, and one Spanish teacher at Whitcomb. Of those five I just talked about, we have a long-term sub hired for the first three weeks of the school year for the Spanish teacher position at Whitcomb, and a Spanish teacher identifier who will begin starting the end of September. So that one will be filled. And we have an EL teacher already in process for Goodnow. So realistically, we have three teacher positions that we do not yet have someone in process to be hired that's ready to sign an offer. So we're in good shape this year, all things considered.
Great.
All right.
Thank you.
Thanks, Patty.
Finally, on August 26 and August 27, every school held their first 2024-2025 opening staff meetings. At every school-based meeting, a video was shared by the building principal to introduce our common goals and district roadmap. I will share that video at the school committee, so Dr. Scazza, I think, is about to start play.
Welcome back, everyone. We hope you all had a refreshing summer break filled with rest, rejuvenation, and just maybe a bit of inspiration for the new school year.
Today, as we gather to kick off what promises to be an exciting year, we are setting our sights on a shared vision of a future where we will be embarked on a district-wide journey towards improved instruction.
And where we create and maintain a culture of affirmation and value for our members of Marlboro Public Schools community.
This isn't just another school year. It's an opportunity for us to come together, align our efforts, and ensure that every student in Marlboro Public Schools receives a high-quality education they deserve.
Will we explain strategies, deepening our collaboration practices, and reinforcing our commitment to equity and excellence in every classroom?
The road ahead may present challenges, but it also poses tremendous potential. Together, we'll navigate this road with purpose and dedication, building on the solid path we've established, and paving a way for even greater success in the future.
So let's buckle up, put our hands up and in two, and get ready to make a meaningful impact this year, because the road ahead is full of possibilities.
As a leadership team, we are committed to one common goal, and have aligned our student learning goals in the district and school improvement plans, one goal, pre-K to 12. Increase teacher capacity for stronger tier-one instruction, which includes incorporating the six identified district EL strategies. Results in at least 60% of our students in each grade level, K to 10, meeting or exceeding their projected growth target as measured by the 2025 Spring New Year assessments in both NAP and reading.
As we navigate this road together, we know it will take all of us working together to reach our destination. From leadership to families, we all have a role to play in ensuring our student success. We are committed to supporting teachers and preparing and building well-structured lessons grounded in the district's approved, high-quality, and structural materials, using inclusive practices for all students, particularly students with disabilities and income barriers, to meet grade-level standards and engage in equal learning.
The MPS Vertical Alignment Strategy is a valuable document. This document clearly outlines the roles that each of us play in a plan to increase student achievement. You will be diving deeper into the document at the building-based meetings.
How will we navigate this road ahead? Over the past several months, we've been working together as a leadership team to create a roadmap, a visual representation which is aligned to our goal of student achievement and well-structured lessons. We have identified 10 stops along the way to help us stay on course and dive deeper into our groove as educators during the 2024-2025 school year. These stops include feedback and reflection times where we will be assessing and adjusting the stops ahead.
As we started 2024-2025 school year and now navigate the road ahead.
We know we are on a path to success. Our objective is to journey together, heading in the same direction and reaching the same goal of increasing achievement in a culture of affirmation and respect.
There's a couple of things about the roadmap. First of all, credit goes to Chris Henry that got all of the, loaded the car with all the mascots from each of the schools. The panther's a little small, but he's there. And if you notice that the very first stop, all the staff members across the district, the first staff meeting, will be learning about well-structured, our definition of what a well-structured lesson is, which includes some lesson plan tools and our new walkthrough tool. At a future school committee meeting, I will bring those tools, as well as the vertical alignment document, to the school committee for review. I don't want to get in front of what everyone is going to be talking about. I want to come up behind so that we're all going in the same direction. So, thank you.
Thank you. We'll move on to the Assistant Superintendent of Teaching and Learning, Dr. Scazza.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. New staff orientation was a success with roughly 45 new hires to the district in attendance, and I want to thank Mayor Christian and members of the school committee who were able to attend and welcome our new hires. New hires received information from several departments, including human resources, financing, nursing, counseling, the Office of Teaching and Learning, and the Marlboro Educators Association. For the second straight year, Lynn Medallu and Michelle Blair were also able to add a session on the My Name, My Identity training that many of our staff members have previously experienced. On the second day of orientation, it was actually earlier that morning or later that afternoon, new staff members reported to respective buildings for site-based training. Some of the schools actually held their site-based training at Wickholm prior to the day of orientation on Wednesday. And a special thanks goes out to our IT department who helped with a seamless transition between presentations during the orientation day in the auditorium. Specifically, Cindy Luke spent the entire day behind the booth, helping us move from one presentation to the next. Mentoring induction is about to set off. We are currently receiving mentor referrals for our new hires, and the mentoring program is about to be up and running on September 5. Mentors and mentees will meet to discuss the process and plan for the experience. MPS continues to provide a mentor to all first-year educators in our district, regardless of their previous experience. Restorative justice trainings have taken place for new hires as well. This third straight year, new hires to the Marlboro Public Schools as of the late-August mark, were trained in a two-day overview of tier-one practices. In addition to these trainings for new hires, each school will have coaching. As a matter of fact, we're not going to introduce new cohorts. We have a different contract. So coaching for tier-one and tier training that has, or sorry, tier-two emphasis that has a focus on community building in the classrooms, and the tier-two, which is resolving harm and conflict. We are very fortunate that our supervisor of social-emotional learning, Lindsay Castro, has added, it's actually four new trainers to her team, so we have an internal training team for the Marlboro Public Schools. That's Beth Bond, Caroline Cadell, Laura Kyle, and Sarah Coleri. It gives us the capability to hold restorative justice trainings on our professional development days, or perhaps other periods of time that we can set aside for those trainings. Finally, the FY25 Every Student Succeeds Act grants have been submitted. I'm happy to report that the grants application went through last week. These grants include Title I, Title II, III, and IV funding for the Marlboro Public Schools. So now we're just waiting to hear back from the DESI representative if revisions are needed. Hopefully, that goes through quickly, and we will be able to bring the grant funding forward to school committee. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on. Director of Finance and Operations, Mr. Wells.
Thank you. So we start with food service. We again are reminding everybody that we do have universal meals program in place, so students get a free lunch and free breakfast every day, so we do and hope that everybody utilizes that service. It helps both families being able to have food and not having to worry about sending in lunches every single day, and it helps the district as well when we have more students that participate by bringing more money to the district, which allows us to invest within our food service program. Facilities is very busy over the summer, a lot of standard projects, new equipment in the kitchen, tree removal on grounds, reorganization of offices, and the normal cleaning, decleaning, and resurfacing of floors. The Whitcomb HVAC project is pretty much complete at this point. The halls are open, the tiles are back up, the cafeterias are open, and the kitchens are open. So we're very happy that that got cleaned up. It looks fantastic. I think there's a little bit of fine tuning on the equipment, but we're really happy where that project is right now. We did put new carpet tiles in the library for Whitcomb, replacing some of the old flooring that was in there. The Jauric HVAC system is an ongoing project. We have added some bypass filters to the system to help clear out some of the filtrates in the water, and it is moving forward at a scheduled pace. We'll have some continued work that happens next week, and then a couple weeks later, we'll have a second set of filters that we'll be installing on the system, and then hopefully we'll get the thing up and running just in time for it to cool off for October and November. The Richard School Building Project has, we have completed the public advertising section of the RFS for the OPM. We received, as of the writing, there were seven firms that had submitted proposals. We actually received 10. We are in the evaluation phase of that. We had a robust meeting today where we worked through it all, and we expect to be kind of completed with that by next week. And I would like to recognize all of our facilities and custodial staff, plus the Richard Committee as well, the Building Committee, for all the work that's been done over the summer. You know, we have two months to get all that work done, and with a lot of programs now kind of happening within the summertime, there's a lot of juggling that has to happen to get these buildings ready to go and for the new school year. So they really scramble around, they jump around, and the staff has really knocked it out of the park to get it all done. Transportation, my first line, optimistic and apprehensive. As of right now, we have, all of our driver positions are filled. We have, all of our routing is done, utilizing some community routes. We are receiving excellent community feedback. We're working through that feedback to make sure that we have all of, you know, all the stops that make sense added to the routes, make sure that everything's safe for all of our students as we move forward. So feeling pretty good. We've got buses, we've got drivers, we've got routes. So tomorrow is our first day, and I will disappear for a little while, as I'm just living transportation for at least a few days. And then we have closed out the FY24 fiscal year, and we'll be returning $3.10 to the town. You are welcome. And we have closed out, balanced at the bar.
Don't spend it all in one place.
The city thinks you put $3.10.
It'll be there for you.
All right. All right. Moving on.
Good question.
Sure. Absolutely.
Thank you. Just a quick question. With the driver positions filled as of writing the report, is that specific that NRT had articulated that to you so that we would be set for tomorrow?
Yes, we confirmed that yet again. It was today. They confirmed as well that all the drivers' positions are filled. There's one minibus position where the driver isn't happy about the route, but as of this time, it is a filled position right now.
Okay.
So we expect everything to run. And of course, you know, the first few days of transportation are always, and weeks, are always very hectic, as we are making a lot of constant change to balance and find out where students are showing up to ride buses. So it'll be a continuous change, but we, yeah, we have drivers right now. What we did learn is they only, like, spare drivers, they have about five of them for their entire hub, and they operate approximately 200 drivers out of that hub, so they don't have a lot of spares. Spares are a very specific type of driver, and not everyone can do spare driving. So that was kind of an interesting fact to be shared earlier last week.
Is it possible that, I know things are going to be shifting, and that you're going to have a lot on your plate transportation-wise, but is there a way that, should we start dropping off? I'm hoping that we don't, but if we have some changes that really start shifting, especially, say, next week, once many more schools are back up, could you please alert us so that we would have an awareness to that?
If we're, we begin to get, have a driver shortage, that's what you're asking?
Yeah. I'm just, I know that a lot of schools are not necessarily starting this week, so I'm happy as a clam to hear that we are good to go. I just want to know that next week, we're still in that same position, and I think it would be really critical for us to be aware, as well as in the community, which you all have been great on, on your communications, so don't get me wrong. And I'm not hoping for something, I just want to make sure, like, let's start the process, that if we start seeing a change, that let's jump on that right away.
We, we met with North Reading Transportation last week, it was, right? We have another meeting already scheduled. I asked that question because it always seems that there's more drivers at the beginning because we start early.
Exactly.
They reported that all of their contracts in the hub were starting this week.
Okay.
So we should know it relatively soon.
Okay. That's great.
They also shared that drivers are specifically assigned to whatever the contract is. So when they hire someone and they say, will you be a Marlboro driver? The answer is yes, and they assign them specifically to Marlboro. So, you know, hopefully, there's, there's no sort of sharing of those drivers because they have been specifically assigned to us.
Great. So can I ask another question then on that? That's nice to know. So is that something that they actually provide you, say, with a list that, you know, bus number 20 is going to be Joe, and bus number seven is going to be Mary? I'm just curious, because I think that's, that's very helpful for us to be aware of.
Yes, we haven't received that yet because.
We have not.
Yeah, because they, they still had one that was in training who just completed yesterday morning.
Just tested yesterday.
Yeah, and just got a CDL. So we're still waiting for the list that actually says exactly the bus number that they're on, but we will receive that from them. We're staying pretty on top of them.
Yeah. Though Patty Brown has reviewed a complete list, because although NRT does do queries and other checks, Marlboro Public Schools insists on our own query and fingerprints.
You were reading my mind, weren't you? Thank you.
I don't think we've ever said that out loud, but that is the process, and so Patty Brown received a list last week, and she went through and communicated anyone, even there were a few drivers that had, their last query was three years ago, so she put them on a list. They needed one right away.
Yeah.
And she did them all.
Great, and thank you, because that was, that was where I was going next, so I'm glad that worked for you. And I just thank you for all that you guys have done on keeping that communication open with NRT specifically, so that we can stay on top of it and make sure that our students are getting to school. Thanks.
I just want to comment that on yesterday, when we went to the opening ceremonies, the floors in Whitcomb were so polished that I literally thought they were wet. They are, like, amazing.
The buildings look fantastic. They really do. Absolute top job on the work that they did. They look fantastic. They did a great job this summer.
Every year, facilities is just, we're very fortunate to have the facilities that we have here, but.
Sure.
Okay. Anything else? Good. Moving on. Seconds of minutes.
Thank you. So I would like to ask for a suspension of the, oh, are we doing that already? Are we at the memo?
Yeah.
Sorry.
Yeah.
Yeah. So I'd like to ask for a suspension of the rules. It has ended up, it's come to our attention that there are a number of different minutes that had not been formally approved, so we wanted to bring those forward to go through a formal process.
Make a motion to suspend the rules?
Yes. So I'd like to make a motion to suspend the rules, so that we can add these agenda items.
Is a motion on the floor to suspend the rules, is there a second?
Second.
Second. All in favor of suspending the rules. Motion carries. So now you can make your motion.
Okay. Now, thank you. I appreciate that.
My pleasure.
Walk me through.
We're all here together.
Exactly. So thank you so much for the suspension of the rules. I'd like to be able to move forward a number of minutes from different workshop meetings that you have before you, and I would be probably easiest if I probably go by date.
Sure.
Okay? So I would like to make a motion to approve the workshop meeting that was on September 3, 2020. Second.
We can vote on them all at the same time if you'd like. So if you want to make that one motion to approve all of them, just read them off, and we can do it.
Okay. Sure. That's completely fine.
I'll retract my second.
Okay, you retract that second. So I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes of September 3, 2020, March 24 of 2021, August 17 of 2021, February 16 of 2022, May 2 of 2022, June 30 of 2022, August 4 of 2022, March 1 of 2023, May 1 of 2023, May 10 of 2023, June 29, 2023, and May 7, 2024. So, and just for clarity, which you have everything in front of you, this is, these are meetings that are either workshop meetings at the full committee, or special committees' meetings that have had to come about for some update. I believe we had some that was about some of the, the building, you know, working with the MSBA on approvals, and as well, budget workshops. So, and those are all open meetings available to anyone in the public. Okay. Thank you.
And I'll second that motion.
Okay. There is a motion and a second on the table to approve. September 3, 2020, March 24, 2021, August 17, 2021, February 16, 22, May 2 of 2022, June 30 of 2022, August 4, 2022, March 1 of 2023, May 1 of 2023, May 10 of 2023, June 29, 2023, and May 7 of 2024. Is there any further discussions, comments, or questions regarding the minutes of the 12 that were indicated? Seeing none. All in favor. The motion carries. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Moving on to public comment. Public comment. Is there any public comment going once? Public comment, yes.
Not the public, but I'd like to.
Sure. Absolutely.
If that's okay. I just wanted to say that in the last 24 hours, a ton of elementary school teachers have reached out to me who are extremely thrilled with the new contract and the extra time that was provided for them on the first two days of school. I mean, excited probably isn't even worth their joyous. It was like, I didn't expect them to be this happy, but as a crew, I think this is probably the happiest start I've seen them have, and it's really, I just want you guys to know that they're, they're just in really good spirits. And the elementary schools, you know, those teachers, I'm a high school teacher, they work so much harder than I do, it's insane, but I just wanted you guys to know that they were just starting the year in a really good place.
place. So, that's all.
That's great to hear. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for sharing. So back to public comment. Is there any public comment going once? Any public comment going twice? And lastly, public comment, any other further public comment? Seeing none, we will close the public comment section. Action items and reports, the memorandum of understanding between the Marlboro School Committee and the Parent Educator Union.
I would like to make a motion that we accept the memorandum of understanding between the Marlboro School Committee and the Marlboro Parent Educator Union.
Excellent. Okay, there is a motion on the table.
Second.
And seconded. Any further questions, comments, or concerns regarding the memorandum of understanding?
With the parent educators.
Correct. Seeing none. All in favor. Motion carries. Memorandum of understanding between the Marlboro School Committee and the Administrator Union.
I would like to make a motion that we accept the memorandum of understanding with the Marlboro School Administrator Association.
There is a motion on the table.
Second.
And there's a second for all, for the memorandum of understanding between the Marlboro School Committee and Administrator Union. Is there any questions, comments, or concerns? Seeing none. All in favor. Motion carries. Policies for approval. Ms. Hennessy.
Thank you very much. So I'd like to make a motion to approve the policies in Chapter J, which would be the student section. We had the first read the last time we met, which was in the summer, and it was July 24th, I want to say. Yeah, July 24th. So you would have time with these policies and be able to review them. As we've discussed before, the primary focus with most of these are the number to lettering change. There are a few changes where we are getting more aligned with the gender alignments, replacements of their instead of his/her or she, things like that, some spelling errors, things like that. So I'd like to make a motion to approve Chapter J students. That would include JA, JAB, JAC, JAD, JAE, JAF, JAG, JB, JC, JD, JE, JE, JF, JFA, JFB, JFC, JFD, JG, JGA, JGB, JH, JI, JJ, JK, JL, JM, JN, JO, JOA, JOB, JP, JPA, JPB, and JQ. So, thank you.
Thank you. There's a motion on the table to approve all of the J block for the policies, and that's seconded. Questions, comments, or concerns for any of the items that were listed? I'm not going to repeat them.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
It's okay.
Further discussion, comments, questions? Seeing none. All in favor. Motion carries to accept all of the J block.
Thank you very much. So next up, I'd like to make a motion for approval of Chapter K, School Community. That would include KA, KB, KC, KD, KE,KF, KFA, KG, KH.
Okay, there's a motion on the table and seconded. Is there any further questions, comments, concerns for the K block?
I just have a question.
Sure.
What was my question? KFA, did you say? Do we have that in our packet? It's not on the list.
KFA.
Request for funding.
Uh, K F, uh, not hyphen, so K F hyphen A. Is that not included in here?
It is.
Okay.
It wasn't on the list.
It is on the list.
Okay, my bad.
It's indicated it's just K F, not K F.
There's a lot of them.
It's okay.
K F and K F A.
This is a hyphen down here, I think.
Oh, the hyphen is missing on the list, but it is on the list.
Oh, okay. I, I'm sorry. Still don't see it, but.
It's right here.
Oh, I see it right here. Okay, I see it now.
Sorry. Okay, we good?
Good. Here, I'll go.
Any further comments, questions, concerns?
Oh, there it is.
Denise, you okay?
I'm good, thank you.
Just want to make sure. Okay. All in favor of the K block? Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And the last would be, I'd like to make a motion for approval of the L block, which has one lovely policy, LA.
Okay, there's a motion on the table for policy LA. Seconded. Any questions, comments, or concerns? Seeing none. All in favor. Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
All right, moving on to 9D. It's the acceptance of donations and gifts. We have O'Connor Portraiture for the Early Child Center for $733.58.
Motion to approve.
Thank you. Motion to approve and seconded is on the table. Questions, comments, concerns? Seeing none. All in favor. Motion carries. Ohio Pile Prints for the Marlboro High School is $55.81.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve and seconded is on the table. Questions, comments, concerns? Seeing none. All in favor. Motion carries. K-12 Licensing for the Marlboro High School for $321.38.
Oh, sorry, motion to approve.
Motion's on the table and seconded. Questions, comments, or concerns? Seeing none. All in favor. Motion carries. Dupont for Marlboro High School Robotics Club for $5,000. Thank you, Dupont.
Yes, motion to approve with gratitude.
With gratitude, we like that. All right, so motion's on the table and seconded. Questions, comments, concerns? Seeing none. All in favor. Motion carries. Thank you again, Dupont. Coco Tree Gifts, it's the Marlboro Public Schools student and families. So this was a donation of clothes that the monetary value is for $1,000. I believe it was a bunch of personal clothing for elementary schools. So thank you, Coco Tree Kids.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve and seconded, bless you. Questions, comments, concerns? Seeing none. All in favor. Motion carries. And last but not least, there's Cradles to Crayons for the Marlboro Public Schools. So this is again a monetary value of 4,500-ish, so it was about, what, 300 backpacks, I believe I read. So thank you, Cradles to Crayons, for providing backpacks with a monetary value of about $4,500.
This is 44.
To approve.
But in the packet it said 45, so yes. So motion to approve is on the table and seconded. Questions, comments, and concerns for both the backpacks? Seeing none. All in favor. Motion carries. And I believe that does it for the acceptance of donations and gifts. So thank you, everyone, for that. Moving on to reports of school committees, subcommittees, and seeing none, correct? We have all enjoyed the nice break with summer, so.
Well, actually, I should say thank you to the negotiations teams of both the Parent Educator Union as well as the School Administrator Association for our successful contract negotiations.
I would agree.
That was great. Thank you.
Thank you. All righty, moving on to members forum. I first would like to introduce our student representative. I'm putting you on the spot, Atul. So if you'd just like to say a few words about yourself, that would be great.
Hello.
Hello.
Hello. My name is Atul Bador. This is my third year coming to the school committee meetings. This is my first year sitting on the board, which is awesome. I presented over the last three years over many different topics. I am the president of the Robotics Club at Marlboro High School. I'm also the class president of the class of 2026. So, that one's very quick here. And yeah, thanks very much.
Excellent. We want to welcome you aboard. It's going to be a great year, so thank you for joining us.
And you have another $5,000 from Dupont to work with.
Yeah, right.
That's great.
Yeah. Thank you for all you do for the community, Atul. Moving on, I believe, I guess we can duke it out and who wants to go first.
Well, first I should say I have reviewed and signed the warrant.
Excellent. Thank you.
I think we should welcome Matt Wells to his first live meeting.
Ah, yes.
Started July 1st. Thank you, Matt.
I feel like you've been part of the team for so long now. My apologies, my apologies, Ms. Wells. You got to settle in, yes, yes.
And I just wanted to do a shout out for the first home football game, which will be next Friday, believe it or not, September 6th, at Keller Herfield versus Sharon High School. Coming to go at the band's halftime show. It is fabulous. You have to come and see it. And of course, don't forget to come visit the concession stand.
Will you be at the concession stand?
Of course. Where else would I be?
Great. So I wanted to thank the administration for opening day. It was, I know it was short. It's a little different than, than what we have done in previous years, but it was really nice. And listening to Caleb and the three students sing the National Anthem was goosebumps-worthy. It was just really great. And so when you talk about how we've always said we want to educate the whole child, and that's what this district really is about, like, it just, it just hit me so much. Yeah, hit her too. She's a little, my emotional person there. I mean, it just means so much. And then Atul, having you here as a representative, it's just really great because it just highlights that we are really a district for everyone, and everyone's kind of really all in. And then when you're talking about how the elementary teachers and staff were all feeling, that's, that's it. It's that regeneration, and we're so excited. So I'm looking forward to tomorrow. Everyone coming to school, and you'll be seeing me. I did not wear this specifically tonight because of tomorrow, but you will see me tomorrow morning in my neon over by Jaric, trying to help with the traffic patterns and Dan. And so with that, I guess what I really wanted to say is that please, 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 be careful going to school tomorrow. Watch the buses. Watch our children. It is all on all of us to help to make sure that everybody gets there safely. So if you see someone that's like stepping out of line, like people being impatient, you can be a good citizen yourself and let them know that they gotta like hold their horses, or they're gonna like meet with me and Dan in our neon shirts, especially on Hosmer. So just please, please think about that. And I wanted to thank the Jaric PTO specifically on coming and collaborating on some discussions around concerns about the safety there and how to address it. I know the principal, Rupal Patel, and I'm gonna join her on going to the Traffic Commission meeting tomorrow morning and the superintendent so that we can just make sure that we're partnering correctly with the city to do our best. And I know, you know, Mayor Christian had offered up speed bumps and things like that to try and help. We're trying to do all we can to make sure that our kids are getting there safely. So enough on that. CPAC, I wanted to mention that there is the first CPAC meeting for this school calendar year, this Thursday night at 7:00 PM. It will be in the Whitcomb Commons. There is also a Zoom link opportunity, so if you need that, I have that. I know that Heather, the president of CPAC, would have that available. I'll make sure that you guys have it, but I know John Fletcher is definitely on that email, so if somebody's interested, please reach out so that we can get that to you.
Ms. Hennessy, might you define what CPAC is for the audience?
Special Education-
Parents.
Advisory Council. I came up with that, thank you. Sorry. Okay, thank you. So it's a great group of people. They're really energized to work together and work with administration and, and help each other out. So really great group. And last but not least, I wanted to give a shout out to the administration and specifically with technology and Mike Lassert, because you might have noticed, there's been a major rollover of the website. And as, as it would be, it's kind of a big deal, right? So I'm gonna say, have some patience, folks, because whenever we're doing any kind of launches of a big change, there's some bumps in the road. If you happen to notice something where our link is missing, let me know. I'd be more than happy to be a point person so that we can get things changed. Just, I would say, it's like any of us, human error, but he's been working tirelessly to try and make sure things are happening. So I would just say, if you see something, say something in a nice way so that we can patiently take care of it and get it on the right track. But I just really wanted to say, a lot of hard work behind what's been done so far, and so far, so good. It looks great. So thank you so much.
Excellent. And just a reminder that this weekend is Labor Day, so hopefully you all come out and see the elected officials walk on the Labor Day parade. It's the 70-something year. It's the longest and most active day of the week, or the year, rather, for Labor Day. And then the Labor Day Festival is coming back, so Main Street will be closed on Sunday. So bring all the kiddos down. There'll be a petting zoo, bouncy houses, a beer garden, numerous acts and bands. So we're shutting down all of Main Street, so it'll be a hoopla of a day between 12 and 5. So come on down to Labor Day.